Call the meeting to order. It's six thirty-two of the Select Board. Welcome, everybody, and I would ask everybody to take note. This meeting, one way or the other, is being recorded digitally, so please be respectful of everyone as you're listening, as well as when you or someone else is speaking. Let's be respectful of each other. First thing I'll ask for is anyone here from open session? All right. You need a chair, right? Because you can go in there and bring one in if you want, I think.
Yeah, there's something there.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone here from open session? Okay. Moving on, Katie, can you do the announcements?
Yep. So this Saturday, we have Non-Such Night coming up. Four P M. The weather is actually looking good and warm for some weird reason in October. So it starts at four. Jacamo's will be up there and Studio Macarons, both from town. We will also have the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. The boys will be selling meat sticks and the girls will be manning the fire pits with smores. We'll also have Neon Alley up there playing band until such time we start the movie, which will be at dusk. We are showing Ghostbusters Frozen Assets, which is Frozen Empire. Wrong, the name. Frozen Empire, sorry. Which is their newest movie out. Bill Shay will be up there in the beginning with not only his Ecto One, but he also has a twenty-five-foot inflatable Steak Pub Marshmallow Man, because who doesn't? You know, other than Bill Shay. So we're gonna be a little bit of a spectacle up there, but yeah, come on by. Again, we start at four. There'll be food that you can purchase and music to listen to and fire pits to stay warm. And then at dusk, which is roughly around like six forty-five-ish, we'll start the movie. Bring camp chairs. Again, this is free parking, free to enter. We don't charge anything. This is just fun for the town. Bring the kids. They can play and whatever on the, on the park and everything else. All right. So the next thing up, we have The Taste of Hubbardston, which if you haven't heard, this is our second year doing it. This is the E D C. It is going to be October sixteenth, which is a Wednesday, from five to eight at the Rodding Gun. If you would like to attend, it is open to all. This again is a free event. You need to R S V P to the E D C at Hubbardston M A dot U S by October eleventh, which is, what's October eleventh? Friday?
Friday.
Friday. Okay. So what this is, is if you didn't see the first one or pictures or know nothing, I speak of. Last year, we had a smaller event and we had it open to the businesses. The businesses came. Again, businesses are welcome to come. Set up a table. You still have to R S V P. The food vendors are local Jacamo's, the Pizza Palace, the diner, Studio Macarons. I think the pantry's coming, like a bunch of different food places. So there'll be Nibelies. There'll also be other businesses there handing out and showing what they make. Handing out business cards. Some of them may have grab bags. It's free for them to come. It's free for the public to come. Basically, we're opening up the door to, you know, know what we have in town. Because a lot of people have no idea that we have these businesses in town. And the businesses want to know you guys and that we're here and that we have businesses here. So this is open to all. Just please R S V P so we know the numbers of how many people are coming. R S V P by October eleventh to E D C at Hubbardston M A dot U S. And again, the event is on Wednesday, October sixteenth, from five to eight at the Rodding Gun. All right. Moving on. We have Trunker Treat, which is put on by the P T O. The P T O is looking for people to volunteer for this, not only businesses to do the trunk part for the kids to come through. They're also looking for volunteers to help with the event. They're looking for volunteers for pretty much everything. You know, to wrangle kids, whatever you got. People dress up. I don't know. You can contact them. Their email is hub, H U B, P T O at gmail dot com. The Trunker Treat is October twenty-fifth from six to eight at the Hubbardston Center School. And it is like a donation for them, excuse me, a fundraiser for them. You donate five dollars per bag to go around to the different trunks that everyone sets up and they give you the bag and everything else. So basically, you're buying the bag. But they do have contests for the best trunk. They have the contest for all kinds of different things and fun prizes to give away. I think for best costumes and things like that. And that's again done by the Hubbardston P T O. And it's October twenty-fifth from six to eight. All right. Then moving on, we have the Halloween Parade for Kids, which is going to be October twenty-seventh at twelve-thirty. The kids get dropped off. You can leave an adult if they're little, please. Dropped off at Fire Station One in the center of town. They ask for a bag donation of candy and the candy ends up going back to the kids either at the event or later on for the Main Street Hubbardston Houses for actual Halloween. But anyway, October twenty-seventh, twelve-thirty. The kids march down in a parade down the street. They shut down the street for all the little kids in their little costumes. It's super cute. If you don't have a kid, come down and watch them. They just like people waving at them. They give them some kind of audience of some sort. They come around, they come to the school, and then they have a little party set up for them with treats and desserts and things like that. And then there's a magician, Eddie Raymond, is, does the, he does it every year. God love him. Gives a little show for the kids. He's, he's actually kind of funny. He's a local guy from Templeton. If you've never heard of that man. But anyway, so that's the Hubbardston Halloween Parade. Flo does it every year. God love her. October twenty-seventh at twelve-thirty. And before anyone asks me, Trick or Treat is October thirty-first, as always, from five to eight. There's going to be a block party here in the center, as always, from five to eight. So never any other day and it's never any other time, but yet I get asked every year. So information's out there. All right. That's all we got for October. Moving on.
Any questions? Anyone else have any announcements?
Is there a Saturday Storytime coming up?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to remind people when that is?
It's, yes, it is October.
Twenty-eight. That'd be twenty-six. Maybe twenty-six.
I do believe it's actually October nineteenth.
The week before.
One second.
Twenty-nineteen is a Saturday, is it?
Yep. Is a couple of different things, I guess, going on for October in the library. And that is, we have a cauldron candle making night this Friday from six to eight. There's still spaces available. They can fill out the sheet that is on the library Facebook page. We have a Saturday Storytime on October twenty-sixth at ten A M. And we are also doing an spooky bedtime Storytime at six P M. on Wednesday, the sixteenth.
There you go.
They can come dressed up in their pajamas and we'll have activities like pumpkin painting and all of that.
Same night, Taste of Hubbardston.
Yeah, same night, Taste of Hubbardston. Bam.
Thank you, Patricia. Boarding one, is there anyone from National Grid here?
Mr. Chair, he is on the Google Meet. I will stop scaring my screen so that he may...
Okay. Mr. Fontaine, may I turn your camera on, please? Fontaine.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair. All right. We have a public hearing. To National Grid has submitted a petition to install one jointly owned pole number one thirty-eight to seventy-five on Old Westminster Road approximately forty, forty-hundred eighty feet north, northeast of the center line of the intersection of Old Westminster, Westminster Road and High Bridge Road. This is a call to serve a new home in Hubbardston. Introduce Mr. Fontaine. Good evening, sir. Would you like to make your presentation?
Good evening. As you said in the petition, it is just one midspan pole going into the just left of the driveway for the new house. We will be going underground from this pole to a transformer about two to three hundred feet up the driveway on the left. And that's, that's pretty much it. I don't know if, if you have any questions about it or need any clarifications.
I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So, thank you, sir. How common is three-phase electricity in a residential home?
Not very common. I believe we don't typically allow a three-phase in a home. This would just be a single-phase installation.
I apologize. I was under a different impression.
Does any board members have any questions with the gentleman regards to this? Are there any questions from the public?
What's the install date? I didn't see it.
What's the install date, sir?
I'm not aware of the install date. I don't know how far, because there's a before the, everything can get inspected. The, the pole has to be set. We have to have our, the customer has to run the underground conduit. We have to run the cable underground. We have to install the transformer. We don't typically schedule something until we, like, in this instance, we don't, wouldn't schedule it until we have the town approval. So it would only get scheduled after we get that, after we have, receive the easement back from the customer, after we receive payment, things like that. So I, I couldn't give you an install date at this time.
Thank you. Thank you. Our superintendent for the public wants to have a question. So Travis, you're, you're, you're there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Barely.
Can you hear me?
You have to get closer to air.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Go ahead, Travis.
I'm just cautious on the distance from the road that the pole's gonna be just for obviously plowing purposes.
Sure. I can, I don't know if I staked it, the pole with the customer, yet. Or if I did, it was several months ago, so it might, might be gone by now. But if you'd like, we can set up an appointment with the customer to, or just between you and I to, to go stake that pole and make sure that it's far enough away. We don't like having poles right on the road either, because it just increases the likelihood of it getting damaged by somebody or a plow or what have you. So if you'd like, we can set something up. I can send you my number.
That'll be great.
Okay.
Anything else, Travis?
No, that is it.
Okay.
Actually, really quick, is, is your number on, I would assume, the town's website? I can find, I can find it and give you a call tomorrow?
Yes. Yes, my details on there also.
Okay, I will do that tomorrow.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions from anyone, comments?
Board?
I just have one question. So the pole is on the street? I mean, I'm looking at the picture in the lot. So it must be, do you have the picture up? Anybody else?
I do.
So pad one, that square box, is that the transformer? Not the pole, right? The pole's on the street?
The pole's on the street.
So that's the transformer and pad one on the box?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, can we get a motion to approve the installation of one jointly owned pole on Old Westminster Road by National Grid, as was presented?
Mr. Chairman, before that, I respectfully ask that you allow the people in attendance that have come to...
I asked and no one's sitting.
All right, I was moving chairs.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so do we have anyone here who wants to ask questions or butters on that?
Anyone like to speak either in favor or in opposition of the petition?
No, because I asked that and nobody indicated, so. That being the case, could we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, the next item we're taking up, requests for plowing of private ways. We've received several requests regarding this matter, and I'm assuming that's what most of you were here for. You must be part of the request. Again, welcome. We'll certainly give you your chance to speak. And since there are so many of you, assuming that you are all interested in either commenting, then I would ask each of you to try to keep your particular feelings between two or three minutes so that everybody else gets a chance, because we also have questions that could and comments going from the board, which will open up there now. So let's start with the board. Are there any questions regarding this particular item?
Well, it looks like we have three different streets.
Yeah.
Correct? Can we maybe take each street separately so there's less confusion?
Yeah, there are three streets and they're all, each of them is a dead end.
And Select Board, do you have a printed version of the policy? Please look at it.
Well, mine's the last one. It's, it's... I, while I looked it in the...
It's on you, it's on you, sir. It's something like that, yeah.
So you want to, which one are we gonna tackle first?
How about alphabetical order?
Sounds good.
Plum Tree seems to be the first one.
Yep. Okay. Comments or questions from the board on this?
Nate, can you just summarize for everyone where we were on this, the last meeting and how this came about? So anyone who's just tuning in, they're on the same page?
So last time on Hubbardston Select Board, we were going, we're doing something that is a little bit of an exercise just to ensure that after the pandemic and after so much turnover that all of our policies are in place and everybody knows what is on the books. And so we're pretty much just going through to make sure everything is right as rain. When we were going through with the policy for the plowing of private ways had come up. It is a policy. It was on the books. The town followed it for many years after its acceptance. But in two thousand fourteen, I don't know if it was COVID turnover and Select Board reelections and changing Select Board members, but we stopped following suit on the actual policy language. So after realizing that the policy was there and hearing from Superintendent, our D P W Director, Travis Brown, we wanted to ensure that everyone was given the same fair opportunity to present why their street should be plowed as a private way and ensure that the Select Board was following the policy guidelines, which states that the entirety of a street must apply. The Select Board must approve it, and then it either has to go in front of town meeting or be allocated. For the past five or six years, Plum Tree Lane has been being plowed out of the D P W budget. I, as town administrator, do not feel that is an appropriate pool of money to be plowing a private way. So I just wanted to make sure that we were doing this all above board and making the same offers to all residents of private ways within the community. So here we are. The, the only street this evening that did churn in their request in entirety is Painters' Road. So the South Cove and Plum Tree Lane are incomplete applications, but that does not mean the Select Board cannot act in their, in their rights as the Select Board and make an approval with a partially completed application. Thank you.
So Nate, as you...
We also have Travis here tonight, okay, on Zoom.
So Nate on Plum Tree, so there's two applications that came in. How many streets are, how many?
It should be four.
It should be four total?
Yeah, because two of us are here right here, number two and number eight. Yep, because I emailed my end.
Okay.
And so do they. And then my end's at one and then Gailey at three.
Mr. Lyon has only sent in his D.
He didn't send his application.
No, just, I got a copy of the tape for him.
Okay, so right now we have fifty percent of paperwork on Plum Tree, but it sounds like the intent was everyone was going to be sending their stuff in.
Yes.
So. Let's see. So it looks like, according to our policy, we have three pieces that has to meet. Maybe Travis can help us a little bit with this. So theoretically, in order to be able to plow a private way, according to the town of Select Board, or, yeah, town, I'm doing great today. Let's start talking again.
Want me to read it? I got it.
Yes, could you do the three highlights for me?
Yeah, sure. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty, paragraph six C, "Order Selectments shall annually designate the private ways in the town that are eligible to be plowed under the following provision. Every private way to be plowed by the town must, one, be open to public use; two, be of sufficient width, minimum of fourteen feet; three, be determined by the highway superintendent to be in a condition adequate to ensure that the town can perform the work without endangering the condition of the equipment or the safety of the equipment operator."
I think that's probably enough.
Okay.
So I guess then the question, at least I would have, is Travis, can you walk us through those three pieces for Plum Tree Lane?
Walk you through what you want me to...
So can you tell us which of those provisions that they meet? So Plum Tree Lane, is it open to public use?
That's only if it gets accepted to be plowed. It's stating that it has to be open to the public for use and that it's got to be a minimum of fourteen feet and that the, the road has got to be in adequate condition, meaning it's got to be in good condition throughout the course of the year. That means through the winter, so on and so forth, in order for us to plow it.
Okay, so as of right now, does Plum Tree meet those three specs?
The condition of it doesn't.
Okay, so the first to the third. Do we want to talk a little bit about that third piece?
What's there to talk about? It's, it, the, it's, part of it is tar, which is falling apart. And then the other half is dirt and it's washed out on the backside. Goes down to a dead end, more or less. And there's, if any, just enough room to turn around. Really, there's been just a single truck going down. The town trucks haven't been on it.
Can you, can you explain for everyone why it's important to have the road in?
The door must be open, not be closed. How the trucks coming in?
Mike, can you please shut that door?
Yeah, no.
Thank you, sir.
And just easily throw an oxygen.
Send me a picture, email, and send you his application.
So I'm sorry, Travis. I guess what I was asking on this piece is, since we have a great deal of number of people from the public here, can you just explain why it's so important from the D P W's perspective to have the road meeting certain conditions before we send someone to plow it?
One, it's a private road.
Yeah, that's...
They're asking for us to do this, and that's one of the provisions in the bylaw, the policies and procedures that needs to be followed in order to do so. Obviously, for not damaging the equipment to be plowing the road.
Okay.
Okay, sir, yes. Would you state your, state your name, please, the one you do speak?
Plum Tree Lane. Our dump trucks come up and down that road every week. And the dump truck can turn down there. I don't understand why plowed can't.
Well, I could probably answer that.
Go ahead.
Plow's got a fourteen, a twelve-foot or a ten-foot wing on the side with a fourteen blade in the front. Will it still turn around with those?
The city ones are, not the ones that have been plowing us for the last ten years.
No, that's a contractor.
Right, that's what's been plowing us through the town.
Right, but we're talking about the town right now, not talking about the contractor.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, if one of our dump trucks went to go up there to plow that road, would they be able to turn around?
I don't see a reason why not. I mean, if the trash, right, yeah, the trash.
Didn't have, uh, back.
Excuse me, sir. You have to identify it, but he was speaking, but if you need a name, please, before you have any comments.
And actually, when they were doing the road and everything prior to, and they all lined up in our road, came up, turned around, and turned around and went back. There's room down there to turn around.
Okay, you had something would you like to say?
No. I don't see the spot. And there've been many triops that turned around down there. The triops are a lot bigger than the town trucks that they have.
Well, I think, I think Travis can answer this question for us, right?
Yeah.
Travis, do we have, do we have a piece of equipment that can, size-wise, handle plowing that road?
Yes, we have a piece of equipment.
Thank you.
So the other part of the question is, I think that Travis is concerned about is the condition of the road. So is it? I haven't been, I haven't been down that road since I went to your house last, which was like, how long? I can't remember. So is it going, is Travis, are you concerned that it's like ruining the plow or is it plowing up the tar? What? Because we can't ruin the road when we plow and we can't ruin the plow when we plow either. So I don't, like, I haven't been down there in a while. Is it the plow that's gonna get ruined? Is it the road's gonna get ruined? Both? What, what's the deal? What's your?
The, the thing is, is prior to even doing it and having the letter sent out to have it fixed, which we've had concerns with a couple of residents, because not every resident on the road wanted to do anything to the road. So the concern was that the two residents would have to put the bill to fix the road in order to have it plowed. So we go through this year after year, but that is the stipulation of the policies is to make sure that the road is fixed prior to and during the year while it's being plowed to fix. That is what everyone, and that's why they ask for everyone's signature from each house to state that they are in agreeance of doing that. That is one of the stipulations of being open to doing that from the town.
Okay, so how many houses?
Has to be accepted at town meeting, so it's not even just that.
Four houses? No, he's saying there was seven. Seven houses total. We have two full applications, but a couple more coming. Okay, four applications out of seven. And the road needs some repairs. You don't give a what?
Yeah. She wants to... Would you give us your name, please?
Erica Poisson, Plum Tree Lane. I would argue that Plum Tree Lane is in no worse condition than many public roads in town.
I would not argue that either. Problem is, is it's a private road. There's where the snafu comes into play. And I don't want to say, I, trust me, I'm right there with you, because we have some roads in this town where it's slowly trying to fix them all. So then it will come back to, when we do fix them all, now what are you gonna do? You know what I mean? We've been ruining, oh, we've been ruining the plows on this road and it's private. And this is, this is the, the devil's, you know, side that's gonna come out. Especially when this has to go to in front of town meeting to be voted on. You guys pay taxes. You all pay taxes. I pay taxes. Everybody pays taxes. The thing is, is if it's a town-owned road, we all have to pay to fix them. Unfortunately, there are still some private roads that the rest of us are not having to fix. So that's where it's gonna come into, there's a problem eventually, because once all the roads are fixed, then we're still footing the bill to ruin the plow on your road, which we don't want to do. Nobody wants to ruin a plow on anybody's road. We all want them to be beautiful and drive over them and not have our transmissions fall out and everything else. Or ruin our shocks and everything. So this is where we're gonna run into a problem. So I don't know if there's like a, at least get it up to par this year, so it's not gonna ruin something with minor adjustments, and if everyone's going to put in on the whole street a form, because again, we got four out of seven and we need seven. So.
I think that's the first piece is getting...
Yeah, we need all seven.
There's seven people on there.
And then what the minimum is to fix, to at least repair, so we can plow. Because I, we all, you know, no, we don't want people to not be able to get out of their damn house. That's not okay.
Sarah Scott on that seven Plum Tree. With the letter, we looked up, you know, we were doing some research, nineteen eighty-five, it says you don't need all the letters for approval. It's, you guys are the final vote on the plow. We gather if you get a hundred percent letters back or not.
Yes, and I had mentioned that earlier, that the Select Board...
But with the letter too, we got it on the twenty-sixth. It was due by the first. We didn't have much time to literally sit down. I mean, I have a busy life. You know, we don't have time to just, oh, wait, we have to have this in by Monday, and we got it on a Thursday. I think that would be something we would get at the beginning of the month rather than the end.
And we're not against holding, at least I can't speak for everybody else, but I'm not against making sure everybody can get their paperwork in. If that's what needs to be done, because obviously some of you are on board and some of you want to be on board that are here, obviously. I, again, I don't think anyone's in a, hopefully snow does not fly before. Thanks.
May I speak? Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
What year are we talking about plowing us? Twenty-six, or we have to appropriate money now, which we're already.
Plum Tree would likely fall into a different situation than the other two requests, as the town is currently plowing and has been for at least.
Please? What'd you say, Travis?
No, it's my dog, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm like, what?
I'm an administrative.
Just a minute, sir.
I'm also not opposed to giving you more time. The letter was sent from Patricia. I wrote it the day before on September.
Sorry.
You send out the letters in two batches after?
Because it wasn't even the correct mail inside.
Yeah.
I didn't have, I had for two Duffy Lane or something. And I got it on the weekend. I got it on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, because it said it was dated for the twenty-fifth, but you wanted it by the first. That's the letter we had gotten. And I haven't, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm a busy person. I know everybody is too, but I didn't get the right address, Stephen Paul with the, you know?
There's a Duffy Road.
Yeah, three Duffy.
Two or three Duffy Road or something, but it wasn't addressed to me.
But you not live on Plum Tree Lane?
I do, but the paperwork inside was for Duffy.
That's a bit like this.
And that was mine.
Paperwork was all the same.
The paperwork in the envelope was all the same.
Address, the address was to whoever lived, the head letter piece where you're mailing it to. You know, you get the letterhead, who you're mailing it to on the letter. It was for somebody on Duffy Road.
Who? I printed mailing addresses based on our assessing software, so.
Email was the, well, my address, but the inside was not my address. The legal document was not addressed to me.
So I think at the end, though.
Same with her as well.
Okay.
That is only the law.
The other letter that came in that said it had to be in by the twenty, by the first, the paperwork I said was October twenty-fifth or September twenty-fifth, and it came by October first.
Inside here.
Hold on, she's got the paper. Let's see what this paper says.
Did you write down it the same day?
Kindly.
And what's the date?
Oh, I didn't.
September eighteenth.
I just love that.
We got it on the twenty-sixth, because I said the twenty-fifth first. That makes no sense. That doesn't give us time. But this one, can I take this one second?
Not opposed to giving more time.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, we wasn't. Well. Because I see that, and then it's another one. Regardless, we're going to get it until the twenty-sixth.
And no one is in opposition to allowing people to have?
Yeah, we're not saying, no, we're not plowing it because the application is on it. That's not going to happen.
Another key issue to remind you all, besides, because we're certainly, as you were saying, extra time is not a problem with us, yet the other problem is we've got to know that you, as people on a private way, are going to be keeping up your road so that it can be plowed. And this is a major question right now, besides this thing with the letters, which we apologize for that, but it is a private way. And one of the requirements is that the people, when you move and live on a private way, that's part of it, that it's kept up, so that it can be dealt with. And that's a key thing that we need to consider, because we're just going to be throwing good money after bad if we keep dealing with the road. The road's not going to improve itself, and it's not going to get better. And in the same sense, for us, it's almost like I said, it's throwing good money after bad.
Sir Chairman.
So, yes.
I would like to also apologize, because I guess there was an administrative snafu when I printed out the letters, when we mailed them, the stuffing of the envelope. Those people were not aware that the addresses were individually placed on the individual letters within. That is my fault. I apologize.
So it sounds like, so.
The facts are the same, but we do apologize about the address confusion.
So Plum Tree Lane is one we've been doing right along. I think we just need support from the other three members or the three homes on that road to actually say, so make sure the paperwork gets in, so we can confirm that we have all seven. And then I think maybe even there can be an offline conversation with Travis as to a minimum of what would need to happen this year to show moving forward in the direction.
Sorry, Sarah Scott again, but this is important to that, because the one that lives at, what number?
Six.
Six. She, Gagne Alicia, she is not here in the States right now. She's down in North Carolina, helping with the hurricane, and she's the actual owner of the house. That's why they are not here, because she's nowhere, she's not even around.
So they could, you know, we can find, someone can send the form to her on her, on her phone. You know, fill out an email and say, the form is attached. I agree to all of these pieces. Agree to all of these pieces, and then I'm sure someone can help her find her deed.
I can get ahold of her deed as long as I get her permission to do so.
The key is, right, when we have seven people on a private road, theoretically, we're trespassing, right? So we need permission to make sure we can go on their property to be able to plow. So that's why it's so important to have everyone's signature on that road saying, we totally get it, and if something happens, we're not responsible. Right? Because we're using taxpayer money, essentially, even though it's appropriated, usually a town meeting, it's still taxpayer money on a non-owned town road. Does that make sense? Okay.
We're printing the applications for the people that did not have them right now.
So I knew you were going to call me, but regarding this, okay? So I've been here now ten years, and I think my neighbors here down in the road have been here for about four years. So I didn't know it was a private, well, I didn't understand what it meant to be private. Nobody said, hey, you know, it says private road, we pull in. Until like two or three years after I was here, when I got the first letter from the town saying, hey, your road needs, isn't up to par. And so we all went out with chainsaws, cut off everything back, built potholes, did all of that. How do we get past this? Because there's a long story involved with this. With this road, my understanding is, it was supposed to be a big horseshoe. And at some point in time, whoever did the building on this property paved the very first, I don't know, hundred feet or whatever, and then stopped and never went back and paved the rest of the road. So now that we're on a private road, who's responsible for this private road? And why can't this person be held accountable and fix our road? Because I bought a house that I didn't realize comes with this, as did they? This is a big deal, because when I did speak to Travis, like, three years ago, we spoke, and we talked about it, because that would need it. An architect, I've done a lot of parking lots and a lot of concrete and asphalt. That's about a million dollars. So is there a way that it can be something like American asphalt to the local contractor, can dump some asphalt somehow? How do we fix this? And how does this not become a private way anymore?
So Mark, there's not anyone here, including myself, that's going to be able to outline the procedure for acceptance of a private way right here, right now, but I have your email. I will send that process to you and make sure that it is available for anyone else, that, which is my email, is both on that letter and on the website. Tomorrow, I will put together the process. It is a strenuous process. It's a pain. But there is a process to become accepted there, and I will get you guys that process. But let's figure out what we're doing here right now.
And understand, there's a long run at the end of this, because it's not like all the houses are, you know, vacating in, you know, this year. So we're going to be there for a little while longer. And I don't think anybody.
It's part of the policy to renew this every year.
Every three years.
Every three years.
It would be great to not, you know, not worry about it like every other road.
Yeah, to be a regular road.
Just be a.
Town-owned road.
Like a real road, yeah. Because.
Okay. Can I get someone else first? Go ahead.
I can explain this whole situation to you. The town permitted the contractor to do this road. And that road was supposed to continue all the way back up to sixty-eight. And he was told, the town was told not to let him get away with it. But the reason that, under that road is paved, is because the town refused to give those two gentlemen building permits until they fixed the road, until they did the road. So the contractor that was building the houses went right up to the property line. That's where that road ends, and on their property line, the first one and the one at the end shut that. The road never went through, because the contractor knew he was in a deep situation, because he sold all of that to the property to the state. And the road became a dead-end road. It was supposed to, and it's on the blueprint that it shows it all the way back out. And if you look up on Google, it'll show you that it goes right out. So it's not supposed to be a short private road, a dead-end road. It was not supposed to be. So the town let this man go away with it, and the town was told that they should watch out for this man, not for him. And the road in front of my sister's house was eighteen inches lower than what it should have been when I came up here in two thousand seventeen. The grade of that road was supposed to be eighteen inches higher. And there's an underground spring that washes that road out every summer. And two people on the street, at one week, one year, paved it. Or brought gravel in, and they put it in, and the plows were plowed all the way down into that circle. It's not even supposed to be there. That's why the road is a dead-end road. It's not because it's, because it was made that way. It was meant to go all the way out.
Snow could have more problems than just.
Yeah, we could way more problems with this road than.
And you can win us some new applications.
Pardon me?
You guys. You all own one seven.
Every time we're asked about the road, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
But every time we're asked about who owns the road, it's Dave Richards.
Excuse me?
Too many side conversations.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Dave Richards, the original contractor that started that whole thing. And it was owned by Mueller's Laundry, which is now out of business, because Doug Richards sold the laundry business. So. And then every time we're asked about it, they tell, the town tells us that Dave Richards owns the road.
You guys will have a deed, and it will go somewhere in the middle. Your deeds, yes, your deeds meet, just like the rest of them do.
And I don't know how the deeds meet, because it wasn't set up that way originally.
There's so many feet into.
Excuse me, please don't, we not have all these separate conversations, because then no one's going to be heard. Okay, please, so again. Need some suggestions here.
My suggestion is that we let the folks all get their paperwork in, and maybe we can have a small sub-meeting, not us, but Travis, maybe TA, and like maybe one of us, so that way we can come back at the road and whatever owners want to be there to walk it and actually, like, this is a problem, this spot's a problem, this spot's a problem, kind of like point out what the problems are. And then we can come to a, come to Jesus me, and I'll get together later on. That's my two cents.
Mm-hmm.
Sir, you are correct. Plum Tree Lane, the road is marked as, in our GIS system, as legally owned by David M. Richards.
I beg to die from.
It is a private way.
But, so who owns that? He still owns it?
With five-two-seven-seven Spalding Bridge Road, Montana.
So is he paying taxes on that road?
Can we send him a letter?
Should let him pay for it.
Yeah. Bring it up to par. What if it's a state?
Sell it to the residents.
I don't know.
No.
Dave Richards owns the road.
So that was the builder, I take it?
Yeah.
I can't find.
It's not, oh, no, there's an address. There's not, I'm not going to say it.
Okay.
I already did.
So.
Public record.
Public record.
In Montana.
All right, so I think at this point, we've kind of established the direction, so the rest of the paperwork from the other members of the road, and then Nate and Travis, and he'll grab one of us and meet with the group of residents from the road and see what we can do to proceed for this fiscal year.
Now, seeing as it is difficult to talk to a bunch of people at once, do you guys want to name someone, maybe Mark, the liaison to speak with us? And we'll set something up. He can call you, or stop by your house, and we'll go from there.
I'll do it. Clearly, this is not going to be solved tonight, no. Not with all these things that have been brought up.
Well, I could solve it tonight.
You're going to pay for it?
No, I was just going to turn it to the town.
Yeah.
Still considered a private way.
Yeah.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
So what if this guy that owns that road doesn't allow us to go on it?
I know, that's what I'm thinking.
There's egress for all of them anyway, and a public safety egress, and so. It'll, it's private way.
So I think we're going to worry about this one, once Nate does a little more investigation on that.
All right, last comment then.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is a mess. I think we all see that at this point. For this winter, are we in filing limbo? Are we going to get plowed? What does that look like for us?
Right now, it's, everything's kind of, we're trying to figure it out.
That's why I had noted that earlier, that Plum Tree Lane is in a different situation than the other two applicants. It is up to the select board at the end of the day, but I would hope that we would not put anybody in that situation very close to the winter time. But that would be up to the select board. Please allow me more time to do some digging on this, find out what the, because this is a little bit deeper than our policy at this point, noting that there is a.
Yeah.
End owner, so let me do some due diligence here, and I'll get back to you. From where I'm sitting, if it snowed tomorrow, you would be plowed.
Thank you.
We can't have our residents.
Without due diligence, like, if it ends up at the end of this, that we cannot come to a conclusion where the select board votes to approve an application in some set amount of time determined mutually by the select board and the residents of the street, they would have to take it back over. But after a decade, we're not just going to cold turkey and say, hey, this one's on you guys.
Good luck, no. Okay, so I think we're all set on Plum Tree Lane at this time, then, right?
So. Any last comments about that?
So next is Printers Brook Hill Road.
Yeah, I can speak for that.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Take care.
We'll figure it out.
Yes. That was kind of got a curveball there.
Yeah.
What a mess. A real legal mess.
I mean, that goes back many years.
Their deeds should go to the center. It shouldn't, the road shouldn't be owned by some.
How can their deed go to a private way that?
I don't know. I don't know.
Unless he's charging them rent for to use the road.
No.
Okay, so. Go ahead. Sir, would you identify yourself?
Yeah, my name is Brian Frodo, twenty-eighth Loveby Road. That's how Radford says, even though it's on Printers Brook Hill. And we go back about thirty-seven years ago, the town used to plow, and then they dropped every crack of road, because there was too many being developed at the time. And there's four of us up there from thirty-seven years ago. I'm the youngest one at sixty-seven, so we're all getting old. But we've been maintaining it ourselves. We got two tractors. We do a good job. But nobody knew about the application for private plowing until two weeks ago, when our neighbor John Healy, he's on vacation now. And Chris McEwen had just got out of the hospital, so he's not here coming. So Sam right here made up applications for us, so we got everything together, because five of us have retired and got tired. You know, so here we are. And it's a challenge. It goes up the hill around a corner. And they had troubles years ago getting up there with a ten-wheeler during some big storms. And we think if we got nothing to lose, we'll see what happens, you know? We're happy being private, you know? I don't know where these guys go. These are the two newest neighbors for letting.
We've been there only ten years.
Only ten.
For fourteen years, we paid our regular taxes and also paid to have our road plowed by our private people.
Yeah, we really don't pay, you guys. Yeah, two of us got tractors, and.
Two of us got tractors and we're fortunate we can do that. And if I lived up there by myself, I'd be plowing a thousand feet anyways. You know, so.
They won't try.
So, so to be clear, if the superintendent were to come and look at it for us, which you'd have to inspect it. Yeah. I would wanna go over with them also because we have caregivers come up every day. And, you know, uh, delivery vehicles, FedEx, Amazon, the mail delivery, oil trucks in the winter time, so we have to keep it well standard. If that's more important than plowing, we can plow, we've been doing it for thirty years.
So your situation seems a lot more straightforward, right?
Absolutely.
Seems like you, you, you all want your road to be plowed by the town.
Well, we'll see what happens, right?
Right, you've all sent in your applications. Okay, so we'll, we'll send out Travis, he'll take a look at the road.
I would like to see what he comes up.
Okay. And then it's gonna go to town meeting and the whole town will vote and that'll come up on the docket and we'll see if we.
Yeah, that works. What I'm saying, we're all set for this winter no matter what.
Right, right.
If the town can do it, I, I don't think a ten wheeler get up there, uh, if you had a one ton with a plowing sander, that's our ideal situation.
And that'll be.
But I understand the mindset.
That'll be your conversation with Travis, see what piece of equipment he has. If, if you qualify being plowed by the town, what he thinks were the best pieces of equipment.
We all own the road, like there's three of us here tied.
Right, right.
For the good of the order, bear properties, do what each other in the center of the road.
Yeah.
We all get along good.
So, okay, any comments or other questions regarding?
Shout out, talk to each other.
The conditions of this road.
Do I have any?
Have you reviewed the road's conditions?
I went by, I, I know the road, it's paved, doesn't look to be in disrepair. Did I drive up to the end? No, I have not.
We've been expected to. It's a turnaround at the end, that turnaround is privately owned by the last house. But everybody turns around up there, if you know problems with that. But we don't want the road getting damaged either, you know, so.
Right. So, yes, Sam Johnson, thirty four Lombard Road, um, again, on Printers Brook Hill. Um, I don't know if it's been made clear, but, um, the developer, um, back in the mid eighties, when he built these six, I guess, seven properties.
We all built our own.
Right, uh, yeah, exactly.
With no developers, every owner up there built their own home.
But we bought it from.
The land.
Exactly, Leo, whatever his name was. Well, those, those properties, excuse me, um, those properties obviously, um, have frontage on Lombard Road, hence our addresses. Um, but there's a wetland on Lombard Road that when the, um, again, the developer, the owner of the land that became our seven properties, he had to build a road in order to get access to each of those properties. And that road, Printers Brook Road, goes right through all of our properties.
Yeah.
So our properties are, exactly, our properties are on the road.
Right, neither that.
You all share the road.
Yes, right, so that's, with the wetland, it was easy to get a permit, one public one, private one. I think I'm the only one here that's been there thirty seven years. The other four, uh, like, you know, the hospital, one's on vacation, although you know John Healy, he had lots to do in towns, you know. So, so.
Yes, yes.
I just wanna.
Would you identify yourself?
Marching out to thirty two Lombard Road. So I just wanna say, we didn't get a letter from the town telling us about this at all. We just heard through the grapevine and. John Healy told us about it and all of us, and again, we only had a few days' notice and we all did what we had to do to get our applications in, even though we are busy too, but, but we didn't get any notice.
We printed them all out on our computer.
He saw it on the town website, sent me an email, I talked to Sam, he printed it out, printed it. Figured everybody.
So, so do we know if we have the full complement of applicants from the Lombard Road residents?
We do have the full complement.
We do have the full complement.
Okay, so you, that's half the ballot, right? Now we'll get it, now you can meet Travis up there someday going forward here. And then.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure it has my number, so I can be there for the most part. I'm sure he's got a schedule, he's got a certain time too that he can be there.
Okay. See Patricia between you, she can probably make sure she gets you two together.
I can probably contact him, he's got his number, put the ZPW on the website too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Send him an email, let it work.
We can set up with email Patricia again and Travis and I will go out there and we'll, we're gonna look at them all. Like, this is not going the way I imagined it going.
Like, you can be there, John Healy can be there, he's off in two weeks, so.
That okay with you, Travis?
Yeah, that's fine.
I will go, we'll go take a look.
I have one more question if you don't mind.
Yes, go ahead.
So, sir, this is for you.
Yeah.
So let's say the town does accept the road, what are you gonna do for fun?
You're not gonna be out on your tractor.
You can come plow my driveway.
I gotta, I just.
Getting together with Travis too, because we could be out there doing something, we have to open the mailbox, the driveways.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, but I know private ways would be done probably last.
Alright, Travis, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that they all understand the provisions that's in that policy. It states in the, that the private ways that designated by the Board of Select were plowed under the provision shall be plowed at the convenience of the town. Public ways will take priority. So.
Sometimes we're plowed before the town Lombard Road's plowed.
So what I'm saying is, is that if you're used to having your road, sounds like you guys are out there plowing and treating it quite often, probably more often than we're gonna be doing it during a storm.
Well, the, my thought is if the town went by with a sander and, uh, they can get up the hill, why not? You know, even though we think it's done and work together.
I'm, I'm just, just bringing it out there so people understand.
Yeah, I, I'm sure when you visit and go up there, you gotta, you wouldn't wanna send a, probably a ten wheeler up there anyways, you know?
Sir, would you identify yourself?
I, yeah, Ray Nelson, thirty two Lombard, and, uh, I just, I wanted to mention the fact that one of the, one of the gentlemen, he, he makes sure that hill's sanded. And, uh, we, we all have four wheel drive. And, yeah, the one time I didn't lock in, it, it cost me. Anyway, the, the point I wanna make is, is that, uh, Bob, what's, what was Bob's last name?
Doris.
At, at thirty six, used to be, used to plow from, from his end down and he passed away just last year. Yeah. And so, and, um, John Healy has kinda taken over that, but he's, uh, he's experiencing, well, yeah, he's got Parkinson's, he's seventy two and. Yeah.
Like I said, five of us are all sixty seven, so if there's some health there, that'd be great. Uh, we'll just make do and pass it along to the young guy here sometime.
Alright, well, we.
You got it.
We seem to have a plan for your road now, what's the final road?
Uh, South Cove, um, and I got.
Is there anyone here?
Is there anyone here for South Cove?
Excuse me, uh, again.
Is there anyone here for South Cove? Didn't think so, I only received one application back, two got returned to me, I don't think that there's.
You know how many are on that road?
There's four.
Four.
Um, I don't think that they're full-time residences, I, I think that they may be, um.
Which, wait a minute, the one down on fence, those are condos.
And no, um. Here, I have the address.
Yeah, South Cove, off fence.
Yep.
Where is it?
South Cove, they're condos.
Right off of sixty eight, going to Gardner.
Uh, the, on the, right on the main entrance of Rieta.
On the right?
Yeah.
Across the street.
Yeah, condos. Not, not the, not Madison Way, not the fifty five over, the other side.
That used to be the fence property, the fence property.
Something relevant to South Cove, we only received one, those are all the condos, but I don't know if the people living in the condos are actually the.
Owners.
Owners of the condo, so when I sent it, it was, yeah.
I would think that the condos have an association and someone that.
Yeah, and then the other, yeah, and then all the West Comet Pond roads got returned to me.
Okay, so it sounds like we might have more of these conversations at the next meeting when we square up with residents, make sure they receive their mailings.
I'm gonna send out a whole second mail.
Correct, I think that's probably one, two.
But we have a, we have a plan for the first two streets, so we're making progress.
And, um, potentially, should we put it back out on our next meeting, so we can just have everything that we need then?
What's his face, a bill, plow road and some.
I'm gonna look into it. That's, I, at your next meeting, I will have more information for us. We are going to get.
He owns this town so much.
We are going to get this letter out tomorrow.
Make sure we get enough tax money for that road too.
Yeah, no, it's, it's paid.
It is?
Yeah, it's paid, that's why, let's just send him a bill.
Put him plowed. Okay, um, that being said, we're gonna move on then, okay?
Okay.
Jeff, it sounds like Travis is trying to say something.
Travis, you got something else? Go ahead.
I'm good.
You're good.
Alright.
It's like I'm done.
Thanks for your time, Travis.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Travis.
Alright, everybody, uh, we're gonna be moving on to the budget goal setting and prioritization, so at this point I'll invite the finance committee to come up and join us if you will. And once they do, Seth, if you could call your meeting to orders and there was a full for a minute.
Call the finance committee meeting to order at seven thirty three.
No.
Oh, okay, oh, right there, okay.
With all this stuff.
I, yeah, I know, you can't help, you punch out a word.
We're good, you're good, Jeff.
Okay.
That makes that call wait.
Nate, you wanna think a lead on this?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank the finance committee for joining us this evening. This is a annual exercise that we do right ahead of the town administrator's office sending out the budget requests for the next fiscal year. Uh, this year I sent out, in addition to the budget priorities and guidelines, a proposed free cash and stabilization guidance plan, which, cause last year a number of people asked, oh, where are we getting these numbers? And they're from the financial policies slash from best practices, but I wanted to make sure that something was, was written out. Is not, from a free cash and stabilization standpoint, that's not, even if we voted on it here today, there are too many variables at play. But for the budget priorities, they are very similar to last year's, they have key budget priorities for FY twenty six. Manage rising education costs, optimize town services, controlling inflation, inflationary, yeah, inflation impacts. Yeah, I, I don't think, everyone has one as well. Right up.
Tell me, I can't see it, I can see that, I can see that further than my screen.
Control inflationary, there we go, inflationary impacts.
On your drive.
Ongoing commitments, reduce reliance on free cash, use conservative revenue estimates, meeting capital and debt obligations, supporting Hubbard's long-term goals. Our FY twenty six budget will focus on providing high-quality services, supporting education and recreation, maintaining town infrastructure, promoting fiscal stability, delivering cost-effective public services. FY twenty six budget guidelines as proposed, personnel costs, pay increases will be based on existing contracts and our classification plan. Any new staffing requests will need to be clearly justified in writing and non-personnel costs should remain at FY twenty five levels unless a written justification for an increase is provided. Those are my suggestions for you guys and I open it to the two chairs and you support for questions or amendments.
I have any?
Just on the FY twenty six budget guidelines, we have the personnel costs, but do we also want to include no new positions?
If you so saw.
I would just, I'm sure it's very clear, but sometimes it's clearer when it's in writing.
I created a really beautiful form for them. Stop it.
Can you clarify that? Let me know, no questions.
So Nate's not going to create the assistant to the assistant town administrator?
Party tribe.
Does, if, we know, doesn't currently exist, we're not creating a new one. Or you could say, you know, unless it's justified in writing.
Yes, that's what I request, we say no new positions unless justified in writing, so then we can at least have consideration if there's something that will have a impact on the community or on our bottom line budget.
Yeah. So like Travis surveys his current staffing levels and realizes he really needs two more bodies. So he puts in a request for two more bodies and justifies the reasoning, including plowing the private roads and additional work.
But that's gonna be approved, it'll be approved by somebody.
Yes, but this is going to the department heads and boards and committees, right? So when they read this, it says, oh, I can do this, but I have to do this. I'm sure it's very standard and we probably do it every year, but sometimes it's nice to have them ready.
Does Quabon submit their school enrollment numbers in October to you? I think you in October.
They are based on October first enrollment number.
We love it.
Last year, we received them in January after I pushed.
They can't count the kids they have in the school today.
There's a certification and it, yeah.
Is an excuse.
No, it's, the state makes, they hard.
I'll go one at a time here, okay?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Squabon knows.
Great. Go one at a time so that we're not talking against each other and Jeff, are you done with?
Yeah, I'm good, yep.
Alright.
Admittedly, the Quabon Regional School District Superintendent's Office has already reached out, I believe you are all on it, in, with a schedule of quarterly meetings. Whereas that's not a groundbreaking improvement, it's many steps forward from where we have been in the past.
So, okay, and go ahead, I'll get your mic.
Um, my, my concern is, is that the state is not involved in the amount of kids. They may have to report the amount of kids, but the school is accountable to let us know how many students are in building. Buildings, you know, so there's no, it's an excuse, it's not. Um, it's a cop rock. They, it's pretty simple to get, how many kids do you have in school?
I do send them regular emails asking for the amount after October first. I was talking to the superintendent the other day already about getting those numbers, so. But there are, whether it be, whatever it is, there's a certification process that takes a little longer than just counting the heads and letting the town know.
Subject to change is a very nice little word after.
True, well, um, but once we know what the school number of students is for all five towns and we know what our percentage of the school budget is and if it shifted greater or less than last year, we will know what's coming down the road.
Yes.
Before we get the number from them, so it's important.
And I think that plays.
Yeah.
A little bit because they would like to do their budgeting and we're also going to have the opportunity, I sent out a letter, we may have, I may propose having another joint meeting in several weeks' time to consider putting together a jointly authored letter asking for different things from the original agreement. I, it's not necessarily that time quite yet, but I did send you what my thoughts are a few weeks back. So we're definitely gonna work with them and I attended the quote-unquote training on the original agreement last week. It was what you think it would be, just talking about formulas, talking about what the schools and the towns have the right to change or is what they don't, a lot of it is locked up, but some of it we could propose changes to. Not to say that with the select board and the finance committee even in whole, that it would be enough to change with the other communities, but we can, we can give it a shot.
But the process is going to occur to review it and be open for that, I think. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mike Stoff, I Lombard Road, if the chair, the finance.
If the chair of the finance committee could repeat what his initial comment was, because I'm located directly behind you. I couldn't hear what you said.
We're looking for October first school enrollment numbers for this current year, which will set the budget for next year for the school budget. That's all we're looking for.
Thank you.
Which, may I speak?
Yep.
Which is basically based off of, uh, real estate value in town, correct? That's how they get their monies, and that just went out of our assessment, so it's gonna be more in.
Yeah, it's like assessment plus kids. Yeah.
But so the formula.
Yeah, there's a, there's a.
Yeah, so it's going.
No matter what, the town's always on.
A lot.
But the enrollment piece is huge because it tells us that we hold the highest.
Right.
Highest hand.
Yeah.
Or the lowest.
We've been the most last year, last year we were. They're the most new students, so.
Yeah, which.
You know, expect it to keep growing. People can move in the town.
As a preview of the financial forecast that comes out in a month, if we stay under six-ish percent, we're good. Over six-ish percent, it's.
You haven't seen that in three years.
At six percent. Yeah, we haven't.
Are you gonna be positive?
Okay.
It usually goes up into the teens and we try to work out where it's down. So far, we've been lucky.
Yes, you're saying, yes, so what they're gonna come out? I know I want. Yeah, I know. That's why I was like, I'll bet you.
That'd be wonderful. Anything else? Something from the committee thing else? If, if that's not the case, then, um, we'll need a motion. But for purposes of the motion and the vote, I'll declare as a committee of the whole. That just basically means when we call for the vote, everybody can vote at the same time as opposed to you having to do one and I don't do it, okay? So we have a motion to, assuming it's okay with everyone to approve the FY twenty-six budget goals and prioritization as discussed.
So we have amended.
Motion made. Is it second? Second, uh, any further discussion, I think anybody's a part. Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Abstaining. Motion carried. Uh, you want to adjourn here?
Do you want to talk about this one or not?
Oh, did I say something? Was more or less just informational. I will, but it's not necessarily something that needs to be approved. I just wanted the boards to know my thought process on it based on the policies. Because I am asked several times over the course of the budget year, hey, how do we get these numbers? Like, where are we following from? And it's all based off of numbers in the policy script.
Did I omit it? I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
No, and it was new. Maybe I haven't.
Okay, I haven't previously submitted. I don't believe, uh.
Okay.
You're done, you know, that's the case.
Make a motion. I submit a motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, we thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Departments will go out tomorrow. Boards will go out probably in the Sunday. Departments are ahead.
Thank you, Travis.
All right, we'll let you guys who choose to leave, I do so before we move on to the next item. See Ryan, the chief is here. Okay, we're gonna move on to item seven, um, which is review of chapter one thirty-five of the Acts of twenty twenty-four firearms for prohibited areas and municipal exception process. Um, so, uh, I'd like the chief to come up if you would, Ryan, and you can. Educate us, please, and then we'll see what happens in terms of the discussion.
All right, so there's really only one thing that, one part of the law that is really important right now. It's all important because there's a lot in it. But, um, I'll just kind of read what it is and then I'll go through what, why it matters. Um, so, uh, master in law, chapter two sixty-nine, section ten K, uh, states that any person who possesses a firearm, loaded or unloaded, in a prohibited area, who knows or reasonably should know such location is a prohibited area, shall be punished by a fine of one thousand dollars or two and a half years or both. And it's a statutory right of arrest, which means that if you're in violation of that policy or that this part of this law, um, that you can be arrested. Now, officers have, uh, discretion. They can, um, they could summon you to court. They can arrest you or do neither of those, and they can just educate on what the law is. Um. That's where we're going right now. That's what we're doing. That's what we've gotten for guidance from, um, from the, uh, from EOPS and, um, from our legal count, the Massachusetts legal council, they recommend that. We don't go arresting people for this. A lot of people don't know that some laws have changed, and even though that ignorance to the law isn't necessarily a, uh, defense, but, uh, some people might not know. So right now, that's what would happen if somebody was carrying a firearm on municipal property. And I'll get into that as well, what is prohibited. So a prohibited area shall mean a place owned, leased, or under the control of state, county, municipal government, in use for the purpose of government administration, judicial or court administrative proceedings, correctional services. And then it includes in or upon any part of the buildings, grounds, or parking areas thereof. Uh, prohibited area also includes a location in the use at the time of possession for the storage or tabulation of ballots during hours in which voting or tabulation is occurring or a poll in place or early voting site or within one hundred and fifty feet of the building entrance door to such poll in place or early voting site. So we already have that, the one hundred and fifty feet for, um.
Politicking.
Politicking and things like that. This is just, this is including, they're using that rule for, to include, you can't carry a firearm within that area. Um, prohibited area shall not include any state-owned public land available to the public for hunting. So that at least they had the foresight to include that in there. Uh, it shall be a defense to a violation if a person has the necessary FID or LTC and securely stores the firearm in a vehicle while within the prohibited area in accordance with sections one thirty-one C and one thirty-one L. That's about firearms, safe storage. Um, and they've changed that to include your glove compartment or your trunk, as long as it's securely locked in those areas. You used to not be able to include those. They aren't included now. Um, and then police officers are exempt from these provisions. And then a municipality may vote pursuant to section four of chapter four to exclude its administrative buildings from being a prohibited area. Um. Under that section, it goes through the town's legislative body, which is a town meeting or a special town meeting. So those, that's how, that's how if the town wanted, they could get rid of that. They could exclude that, um, prohibited area from their administrative buildings.
And could we, uh, for purposes of the record, if you will, explain what, uh, areas in, in this town we're talking about?
So the, the way I read, the way I've read the law, and I'm not an attorney, but I do have a little experience interpreting law. Um, it would mean the rec field, forty-eight Gardner Road.
Forty-eight, yeah.
Newly acquired.
Because there are tenants there.
And the town office is here. Um, right now, that would include the library.
DPW.
DPW.
Town commons, cemeteries.
Any town-owned property is basically included in this unless it's used for, unless it's being used for hunting and that the person's actually actively engaged in that. I mean, you can't, oh, I'm hunting, oh, no.
Yeah. If I might ask also, just for my own information, we're in places here, we're budding and very close to joining and being part of the school. Now, weapons are not allowed in a school. Is there anything in the law that says a building that might allow weapons can't be?
So I, I haven't seen, I haven't seen that in there. I don't know that they've really taken that into account when they wrote the law.
Yeah.
Um.
I would see on midnight if you write laws, so.
It's a, um, it is, it is definitely a gray area. And it would probably be open to interpretation of what is happening at the time. But, um, you know, the driveway that goes around our building here, you're very close to the school.
Right.
You know, um, it could be considered school grounds.
Based on what you're reading, this would go to town meeting. And as a legislative body for the town, they can say yea or nay on any of these areas, correct?
It, it would be, it is, it is all-inclusive, so you're either excluding it, and that's what you would be.
Excluding, uh, all of the areas as opposed to.
You're either, you're either excluding, you're, you're opting out of this, this law as the municipality or you're not. You're not choosing.
So what would be the, oh, and that, so basically that's the only thing the town would be deciding on as opposed to, someone raised the same question in regards to the school being this close to this building. We, we could not say, I'm just suggesting, I'm not saying we would do this. All right, we don't like being so close to firearms at the school, so we would, we'd like this building to be excluded from that.
The school, the school building itself would definitely be excluded.
Well, no, I know the school is.
And, um, but how that works with us being so close, like I said, it.
We're not on school grounds here.
Right, right. This is not the school.
No, but it's, it's proximity. That's why I was asking. In proximity.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. This is not.
I would still get a legal opinion.
Yes.
Prior to that, should the board decide to go that way, I would, I would seek a legal opinion on the grayish nature of the slate building.
All right.
Yeah, go ahead.
May I speak?
Yes.
Do you all know the history, why this came up? Everybody?
I don't.
Okay. So those people to the east of, uh, four ninety-five that run this state in the senate and the legislature, just some shady stuff. We'll get a new gun law. Very shady. Uh, not so much the House of Reps. I'll have to blame it on a nice senate. Uh, they did some midnight dealing, didn't put it out to the public and didn't let anybody battle it like you're supposed to. So it was a shove it under the rug kind of deal. Now, the law was supposed to go active in.
October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth. Maru Healy, a nice governor that we have, decided that she's gonna pull her little purse out and pull that little preamble string out of her purse, made that law active yesterday. Or, yes, last Wednesday.
October second.
Instantly. Without anybody's constitutional rights to fight it. Um, the state has been going around collecting signatures. We needed, uh, somewhere on thirty-seven thousand or forty-seven thousand to put it on a ballot question in twenty-six. By her pulling that preamble, null and voids our constitutional rights. So that's where we're at with this. Now, in, in, in that gun bill, that's when they joined in with their town land property. They threw that in there. Uh, they were gonna put stores and Walmarts in there, but they found out that. So that's where we're at today. Sorry, Peter.
Peter, hold just a second.
You want Healy hearing?
No, no. There you go.
There you go.
All right, so anyway, that's, that's really, that's the. And, uh, you know, I am a gun ma, gun advocate. I carry a weapon every day. I've been in the town hall with my weapon many times. Um, and I would like to continue doing that as a, as a responsible, uh, second amendment person. I've been in law enforcement for twenty-something years, and I like to be afforded my rights. That's, that's all I got to say.
May I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So chief, would you, from your perspective as the police chief in the town Hubbardson, would you recommend that the select board put this on the next town meeting warrant that arises to give the town people an opportunity for the town as a whole to opt out of this legislation?
I would.
That is my two cents. I would like the town to choose.
Yeah.
Which state?
Would.
So we don't currently have an open warrant at this moment?
Funny you should ask.
Oh.
Almost like we're.
We're all in your file papers. And wanna pass those out.
I want to say it's open war, open?
Thank you. Yeah. I gave you some potential dates and the outline that would have to be followed in order to call a special town meeting. Should we call a special town meeting and open the warrant this evening? We could advertise, close on the twenty-first, and if we stuck with our Tuesdays, we could meet as early as Tuesday, November fifth. Melody, the town clerk, has asked respectfully that we do not.
Not do that.
On Tuesday, November fifth.
No.
No. No.
Although that'd get a lot of votes.
That we do not, Melody has asked that we do not meet on November fifth, should the board decide to have a town meeting. That leaves Tuesday, November twelfth, November nineteenth, and November twenty-sixth. My suggestion would be the twelfth, because nineteenth and the twenty-sixth, I get a little bit close to Thanksgiving.
And let's, we, let's get, get it over with. Either it's gonna work or it's not gonna work.
But would that give enough time for people on like country to get it together? I don't want to short those people. And Travis, I don't want to rush everything just to, like, hurry up and get it on. And, or, oh, we can't. We're, we're past that.
Once the talk there would be two select board meetings.
I'm just saying, is there enough time realistically?
Realistically, starting tomorrow, I'm going to be knocking on doors to get applications filled out if I have to, so that everything is together and ready to go.
It's cool. Alicia is down in North Carolina.
November, November fifth seems too soon.
Yep.
Especially. Oh, okay. I was, I was gonna say, that doesn't seem.
November fifth is.
Kind of a big day.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we should have scratched that one anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the.
We can also.
Do that.
Close the warrant.
Hold on.
We can also close the warrant without specifying which streets will be on it. So when, when that, uh, consideration upon, by the way. And then when the actual meeting warrant comes out at a later date.
It'll be on there specifically.
So, I mean, I feel either the twelfth or the nineteenth myself, but.
I would go with the twelfth because the nineteenth is only a couple days before, oh, wait, when is Thanksgiving?
It's late this year.
No, it's late. It's like the last week.
Twenty-ninth or something.
So the nineteenth isn't that bad.
It's maybe eighteenth is appreciation night.
Remind you.
Well, nineteenth sounds good.
If I'm putting that together.
Even though it's putting it off and putting it off. Stamping on my second amendment.
Well, I think we're just trying to make sure it's enough time so we can get as many of the articles we need to address on.
I, I agree. We could hold the public hearing, the first meeting in November. Public hearing on, on the warrant in general.
On the warrant in general.
I would anticipate the largest issue would be this year.
This?
Yeah.
Yep.
And so we would likely have to do it in the senior center, but that would be no problem.
For the school.
For the school or.
Um, yeah, maybe. But bottom line, it still comes down to the, it is law right now, so all we can actually do with, with the warrant and the meeting is do we go with the prohibited areas or, is that correct?
So you'd be, you would be voting to opt out of having prohibited areas? So you'd be voting to have no prohibited areas? You just have to word that in a way so it's not confusing.
Just opting out of.
Right.
Instead of opting in.
Right. But you.
There's not a opting in because.
Don't opt in it.
It is in.
In.
I know, which is so weird.
Trying to be, trying to clarify that possibly for myself is this is not going to be a town meeting where we can argue the law because it's the law.
It's the law.
We can't opt out of the law, right? So it's just this item that.
We're opting out of that one section of the law.
And that's what it's for. So people need to know that because, or else you're gonna have all the people coming up to the mics.
Yeah, and they need to know.
It is a stupid.
It doesn't involve the schools because they're a separate entity. It doesn't involve polling places. It doesn't involve the town hall when she's calculating the tabulators.
Yeah, right.
Right?
And all of that would be.
So it would be put out. Once she's done counting, you walk in there with one, and that's, that's the way I feel.
We can, we can explain that all in a newsletter or whatnot.
Yeah, we're gonna have.
Right now, we're trying to get, uh, uh, a town meeting scheduled.
Yeah.
Let's try and get back to that and get some dates left.
The nineteenth was the one we were talking about.
Is that even the, I don't, is that on the agenda somewhere later?
Do they November nineteenth?
No, this all came together.
Have you got, have you got any?
With the possibility.
Yeah, this is if the board so chose, this is just a memo because I felt like the board may so choose.
I'm now following. There's, I was a little slow on the update, but I'm there now.
Have you read any specific articles?
Yep.
Uh, the articles that I could bring together just while thinking about it quickly would be private road funding maybe, or whoever may be. Approved prior year bills, potential capital requests, and the firearm law. So it wouldn't be a one or show.
Right.
But it wouldn't be an annual town meeting.
It's not gonna be in a one-hour meeting. Or twenty-minute meeting, it would be.
So trying about the nineteenth.
If you so choose, I am here all the time like you ever.
Mr. Chairman, would you accept the motion?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that the select board call a special town meeting for Tuesday, November nineteenth. With the open warrant period starting on October seventh, closing on.
October twenty-first.
October twenty-first.
Second. Motion made in second. Any comments, questions, discussion?
Questions.
Go.
Um, Patty, this is going to give you enough time to. Get to these, every resident on these private ways.
Starting, thought it would be my objective completely tomorrow as soon as I'm walking at seven forty-five.
So is that something we can give them as a deadline? To have those requests or applicants back by a certain time for the rest of this meeting?
There will be a deadline. Let us flush it out and see, because I think unless I can get him to tell me how to create in a butters list, because I wanna do. The last time I did the butters based off of voting. And I'm doing it fully based on assessed properties this time, whether it be seeking it from Rob Heckman, the assessor. From RRG or literally going through on the GIS system and pulling data. But we will get it out. There will be a deadline. I'll, I'll have the the document over to Patricia by tomorrow at ten.
Will we be able to get KP?
To write something down though.
Opinion for that.
For the firearms legislation?
No, for the uh, for the road, specifically the one that came out tonight. That's, that's a legal issue.
I don't have an opinion on Plum Tree Lane at this moment, just because the, I'm gonna look into the taxes and.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking a legal headache.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, that's, that's, that's an entire different situation, right? We've got a handful of roads, and if we get these applications to a timely manner and we get one hundred percent. Compliance back from them, then we can address it at this upcoming town meeting, but without the prerequisites. Like you said, every road may not be addressed, right? We can cherry pick that when we post the warrant and we know what we have for.
Okay, okay.
Alright. And we can work with, if, like, now we're aware of who's interested. And we can work with them, like, even if it's not fully tied up by the twenty-first of October.
Okay, anything else on that? And I'll, I'll, yes, Mike, we're about to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to the chief. Just for my clarification, we go back a month. Um, this issue of firearms and public property, that, that was not in effect. This is all because of the new legislation that just went into effect uh a week ago. Thank you, Chief.
And you can't shoot a semi-auto shotgun anymore.
Okay, anything else from anyone? The motion is still up for vote, so all in favor? Yes, opposed, staying, motion carried.
So I'll get Peter covered.
I'm firing up.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah.
Uh, no problem.
Thanks, Chief.
Sorry to be the bearer of bad news.
Your association shouldn't have agreed with it.
Yeah, the um.
You can. You stick around for the body one camera thing.
I will. Okay, we have a consent agenda. Uh, for our next item, let me go through it with you and then we'll take a motion. Excuse me to approve it or not. First of all, uh, we have four sets of uh. Board. Uh, minutes, one executive and three joint meetings. The first two on your list, the twenty-fourth of July and August seventh, Chris was not here for those. Um, and fourteenth and twenty-first of August, everybody was present. Um. Item B, acceptance of the uh table donation, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Elaine McKay of Williamsville Road, the previous owner of Calico and Cream. Emailed me shortly after special town meeting when it was revealed that the town would be purchasing forty-eight Gardner Road. Asking if we wanted to accept her donation of a twelve-by-six conferency looking table. Patricia and I went and looked at it and it is a nice table. Uh, I thank Mrs. McKay for the offer. I think it would look very nice anywhere in the, what will be the temporary town hall. Because we will be leaving this table here. I asked that the board allow us to get it. She has a. Uh, storage operation, a small storage operation behind her home, and this was left there.
Twelve by six?
Twelve by something. It's a pretty big table.
Oh, for up there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For, not for select board meetings.
Well, we can have some, we can have smaller meetings up there.
Or really small.
The meeting, the room.
How big is this one? Sixteen?
Yes, sixteen, I'd say. Um, the room we're looking to turn into a conference area is a decent sized room. It's probably up from the wall to this here. Excellent door.
Good job.
Alright, uh, and item C, ratification of appointments and wage authorization. It's Christopher, uh, Bergeron, police officer. His wage for thirty-three dollars and seventy-four cents per hour. This is his basic uh ten-year raise of contract, part of his contract agreement. After ten years. Are there any holds on any of the items I've mentioned? Seeing none, uh, could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Some votes, motion made.
Second, do we wanna, do we wanna pull out A-one? So, and A-two?
Oh, uh, so, oh, because of Chris, yeah. So we can vote those separately, alright? Alright, then we'll begin by uh. Taking the. A vote on the accepting. The minutes of the twenty-fourth of July, twenty-twenty-four, and uh August seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Wait, what?
Uh, he's talking about.
We're taking these separately because Chris wasn't here, so.
And then we'll take the rest as the, the entire consent agenda.
Do you need a new motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
To accept those two.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the man for July twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, and August seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions, any discussions? All in favor?
I.
Yes.
I.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carried, and now could we have the motion to approve the consent agenda remaining?
So both.
Second.
And any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Ah, yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to new business. I have nine A grant administration agreement with Capital Strategic Solutions. Would you like?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm proposing that the town enter into agreement with Capital Strategic Solutions for Grant Administration Services. This agreement would take two thousand of the twelve thousand previously allocated for the server. And utilize it for grant administration. The company that I have checked their references, they work with thirty-plus municipal. Organizations in the Commonwealth in Massachusetts. It's unlike Grant Match where they do business in Massachusetts and not only in Canada. So this is, so this isn't like them, but I've met with these people personally, have experience working with them. They believe that it will take approximately ten hours of their work at one hundred and eighty dollars an hour to come up with a grant prioritization. Plan for us to move forward for forty-eight Gardner Road. This will also, should it be approved and we enter into a on-call relationship with this company. It will be accompanied by a request for annual usage of capital funds to kind of. Have a little bit of money to utilize this service should we need it over the course of the year. Uh, I did pull quotes from several different companies and sent emails to about thirty different companies. None of the other companies do sort of the on-call service like this company is willing, is willing to do. The references all check out and it's really.
Where are they based out of? Not Canada.
Not Canada, like.
I was gonna say Puerto Rico.
Did you have an opportunity to review a sample uh report they've done for another community?
That I did not. I checked their references and all of the references had glowing things to say. I know. I have, I pre, I personally know some people that have worked with them on non-grant applications, but they have received successful. Grants, I, yeah.
I'm just trying to envision what this looks like, right? Is this a, look, I gave you ten, here's a list of ten grants you should get in the order you should receive that. You should go for, like, what are you expecting?
We have been talking about doing it is, one, I told her straight up that we were not looking for someone to tell us about low-hanging fruit grants. I can find low-hanging fruit, mat state grants on my own. I want someone to help us prioritize. A, the kind of private and federal grants and the harder-to-attain grants. And then B, let us know in the order in which we should be applying for things that may have matching components. Because we cannot apply for a four million dollar grant that has a twenty-five percent matching component. Until such time as we receive more money for the second phase or further of the project. By looking into this, it can, we receive professional assistance with, one. Just finding out what is out there and two, prioritizing what we should be going for now versus going for later. Is it something that we, that the staff on payroll could do? Yes. Is it something that most of our staff have the bandwidth to do at this time? No.
Are we still filling out the grants or are they?
I'm hoping to fill out the grants myself unless it is a monster. And we will know that at a certain point. I'm hoping to work with the chiefs and certain members of the staff to fill out grants. And Patricia, who helps with grants in my office, to actually fill out the grants. But at this time, I am seeking the approval to. Put the plan together.
Do we know what success is gonna look like to us? Is this gonna be, look, I found you two federal grants, here's the name of them, and here's the dollar figure, peace out, good luck?
Yeah, should we get two hours? Should we get two hours into this and that's what it looks like? I am very much not afraid to pull the plug.
Okay. Cause I, I would envision it to be extremely helpful for them to come up with a roadmap.
Yeah, absolutely.
Of how to do it. I'm just, you know, the roadmap has to be more than, here, I found you five names of grants and the dollar figures and.
And I've let them know that.
Okay.
And it sounds like it'd be adding a lot for your buck.
Yeah, what's the cost for this?
Two thousand and eighty dollars an hour when we initiate them.
Twenty-eight dollars an hour. Yeah, we got money to pay for that from.
We're reducing our.
Reducing the server amount because I do have two thousand dollars left in the tech fund from last year. You know, the capital tech fund that gets twenty thousand dollars each year, there's two thousand dollars left in last year's that I can cover the two thousand on the server.
So they get a percentage of the, um.
No, no. That was, that was. And then they're willing to. It's a ton of money.
Any other questions on this? Go ahead.
Your comment, what's a ton of money?
Hundred eighty dollars an hour.
Eighty dollars an hour is a good amount of money. It's for ten hours, you said? Hundred, yeah.
Hundred eighty dollars.
Hundred, so I'm asking for two thousand dollars for eighteen hundred. Okay. It's a ton of money in a per-hour standpoint.
Right.
No, this is almost trial.
Not if you get a million-dollar grant, right? Two thousand dollars, that's right.
If this does have the full backing of the public safety building unit.
Okay, anything else on this? Could we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move to approve the agreement of Capital Strategic Solutions for Grant Administration Services. Utilizing two thousand dollars from our funds, authorize the town administrator to sign the necessary documents. Sorry.
Motion made second, and questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carried. New business item. Uh. X, administrator matters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The fire department has requested to utilize fourteen thousand five hundred dollars of. No, is it seventeen?
I thought it was seventeen-five and seventeen-five.
Yes.
Is that twice paragraph one and then paragraph three?
One second.
For the, what was it, for the training?
So. Seventeen thousand five hundred dollars from the Holden Hospital account to offer training to applicant. The applicant that the employee that had previously left after over ten years of service was a paramedic. And left a little bit of a gap in the staff. We are having a. We're not having an overwhelming response to the job as posted, so the chief was hoping to sweeten the deal. A little bit by offering to pay for them to go to paramedic school. It would come with a, what we spoke as as verbal commitment, because there would be no way to, to, we don't have teeth for that.
Why?
Because we don't, as a town that is financially in a difficult spot, sometimes we would not have the money to. Go to court as many times as we would need to, and a majority of the judges likely would not consider. This kind of shaking down of a public safety professional.
It's not shaking him down, it's signing a contract where he'll work for three years. You're paying for his education.
I agree.
Chief, from a, from a public safety standpoint, have you seen that work in the past when there is? Not, they've had them and it does not work. People have left and they have not got, they have not recovered money, so it's not worth.
How about they pay for the education, we'll reimburse them. Good. What's wrong with that? I would, I wouldn't. What's the advantage?
Yeah.
They're gonna wanna get reimbursed at some point.
If you go somewhere else, they're not gonna reimburse you.
Correct.
Oh, what, what are we gonna do? Not reimburse them for three years?
No, I didn't say, I didn't put it time.
Well, no, they successfully complete the program, then you reimburse them, that's it. Yeah. They would, yeah, so then what keeps them staying doesn't matter.
Nothing.
This, well, I, I would think as a new hire, they'd be under a, um, nine-month.
Yes.
Probationary period to be reviewed after nine months.
But again, if they got a job somewhere else.
Leave after a year.
So we've all heard this from an HR standpoint before. What if we don't do this and what if we do this and they go? What if we don't do this and they stay?
Yeah.
Like, so there's always those two sides. And the chief had noted to me that he did put the second half of this request in for a current employee. But does not have a current employee to utilize those funds at this moment. Just felt it was not appropriate to do something for a brand-new hire that he would not be able to offer to an existing employee. Should they want to be considered for that.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, everybody feels differently about it, I'm sure. I just think if. You know, if you. You dangle this here, he pays, if they pay themselves and you dangle the apple here, they get to the apple, right? And yeah, whether they leave or not after nine months or a year, whatever, whatever. But at least, you know.
I don't disagree with you. Nope.
I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not the chief, but, um, that's how I would think. I would get rid of verbal agreement. Firstly, you're gonna get rid of it.
Oh, are there any other comments from the board? Oh, are there any other comments from the board on this?
The verbal agreement part was, was from me written in there. We do not need to do it.
Right, so the, I crap.
No. There are sixty-six thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents in the Holden Hospital account.
Do you know I was gonna ask that?
Yeah.
Yes. Calvin.
In FY twenty-four, we received nine thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars. And in FY twenty-five, we received eight thousand four hundred and eight dollars.
What, what traditionally use it for?
Fire. In emergency services. This is the question that Board of Health has been bringing up. Is, because they feel like they should have a chunk of this too. And the only documentation that can be found that is actually authorized and signed states fire. There are a couple of emails from the first former chief, Knight, talking about potentially doing it for the Board of Health, but there are not any signed documents going further down that path.
Mr. Chairman, would you accept the motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the fire chief to expend seven thousand, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars from the Holden Hospital account for the purposes of paramedic education. Second.
Motion made, and second, any further questions or discussion on it? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The thing. Thank you, motion carried. Uh, oh, Ryan's still here, I think. Item B, the, uh, police department grant acceptance and authorization for body-worn cameras in agreement with the union. Ryan, if you wanna talk about that briefly?
Uh. I am ill-prepared for this.
Can I take this?
Nate, take it away. Maybe I can answer some questions.
The chief, with your approval a few months ago, applied for a body-worn camera grant with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. A fifteen-thousand-dollar grant was received for the purchase of body-worn cameras, which we are asking the board to accept this evening. One of the caveats of that grant was that you needed, uh, an MOU or at least a document stating that you are working towards an MOU with the police union. Cause the last thing they would want is for a town to take the cameras, the police union refuses to wear them and then they're sitting in a closet and when another community would be able to utilize them. We met with Sergeant Blood and Officer Bergeron several times in the past, let's say, month and negotiated down to a kind of tentatively accepted between the chief and I and the two officers that we offered a twenty-five cent increase beginning per hour, beginning when they actually are wearing the body cameras. That equates to a four-thousand-dollar per year increase. And there is draft MOU language in your packet online. The, what other communities do you hear completely runs the gamut? There's, it's all over the place, from almost nothing to a lot, to it's in their hour, to it's a stipend, to it's a decent stipend, to it's a very small stipend. So would be, the research came back unconclusive.
It's, um, it's a pretty significant change in their working conditions for them to wear the body cameras. There's a lot that goes into it. There's training, they need to, you know, remember to activate them. They're constantly under a microscope when they're wearing it. And I'm not saying that's good or bad. I don't think that our officers are doing anything wrong, but it's just, it can be a little bit, honestly, maybe nerve-wracking for them to be having it and having to make sure they're doing all these new things that they have to do. And of course, there are duties that they're up there, so, um.
But are you in favor of this personally?
In favor of body cameras or in favor of the agreement?
Both.
Both?
How about that?
Yes, I, I am. You know, I, I think that it create, it, it does create more public trust. Like I said, our officers do a great job. They have a, we, I think we have a pretty good relationship with the town here. Um, it's, it's not like it is in some other parts of the country or even the state, but, um, it does, it creates some public trust. It can also help an officer from somebody that might just wanna frivolously file complaints against.
Sure. Are they anticipating this? They're in favor also. As far as you know?
They're in favor, they don't, they don't love it, but they're not against it.
Nobody likes a camera. Nobody likes a camera running twenty-four hours a day.
You know, there's a change in, there's a change in the way law enforcement's being done across the country. So, um, they know that it's coming eventually. They know that by getting an agreement with the town that they can, you know, at least get compensated for it a little bit.
So are they all gonna be wearing them or can they choose not to and forego?
No, once, um, once the cameras go online.
It becomes part of the uniform, right?
It's part of the uniform and they will wear them at all times, um.
And we did attempt to get language stating that anyone hired before at state would and anyone after this, but the union was not in favor of that. Their original proposal to open the conversation was one dollar an hour. So we got down and to get down to the quarter, we had to make some leeway somewhere.
So, but what's, what's?
Where did we make?
No, no. So everyone.
What's the question, what's?
Oh, no, uh, go ahead.
What's the harm in getting the cameras? We got a grant for them.
Yes, but.
You wanna forget them.
To accept the grant, I mean, need to have you, a MOU with the union or a letter stating that we're working in good faith towards an MOU. It's part of the qualifications for the grant.
It needs to be impact bargain through the union and it was stated in the grant conditions. So that had to be done.
So we can get, we can get the letter that we're in negotiation with the union, right?
They weren't exactly in favor of doing that.
But we're resolved now.
We're resolved on the chief and my level.
They still need to, they still need to vote on it and, uh, you still need to vote on it, obviously, um.
Where, Nate, which, which one of the attachments is this? I wanna go now. Because I have municipal road safety grant program awarding, but I'm not sure.
We rewarded that as well. Yeah. So those two.
That nineteen thousand can change. I didn't memorize the specifics. No, I, I don't know where else it would be. There's grant A and grant B. Yeah, and the other one was the one we just talked about. I'm just, I'm, I'm not seeing the document. Realized two grants.
Yeah, I see A, I see B.
What are we? Are we still in a questioning period?
So what do you, what do you need? What do you need from us this evening? So it sounds like there's an MOU on the table that we need to bless. We're doing an open session, is that my understanding?
Basically, he's looking for the authorization to enter into the MOU, okay? I can read what the motion would be.
To accept the grant.
The grant is not.
So what?
Finally to accept the TWC grant, yeah.
Well, through the town charter, the, it's negotiated through myself and the chief and brought to the select board for ratification.
Okay.
It's the same as the actual collective bargain.
Yeah, it's like a CBU.
Oh, shit.
CBA.
It doesn't have the whole paperwork.
Because they already have their, because they're.
The town.
The amount of money they voted.
Does that, yeah.
Has to be a memorandum agreement.
No.
MOU. And then written into the.
So. Yes, it's a, yes.
Contract question for the chief.
Amount of money.
What I may, please?
Go ahead.
Um, so I'd like to get into specifics. So if an officer, so from the menu goes online, it's turned on?
No. So the way the body camera works is that it is always on.
Always on.
It is, it is in a, uh, static state.
Okay.
Um, when they hit the button to record, it goes back a predetermined amount of time.
Okay.
And that's when it, that's when, that's gonna start the file. So the video file that's on there. So if it's set just for round numbers, it won't be set at five minutes. It's a really unreasonable amount of time. But if it was set at that, when I hit the button five minutes ago, it would have recorded all that and it's on the camera. And then it's, it records until they hit the button to stop.
So what if, uh, what do you patrol and need to take a personal phone call while you're in the crew?
So they can, they can deactivate the camera if it's not. You know, if it's, it just depends on the situation.
You know, eventually we'll forget, right?
And that's, that's why there's gonna be, that's why there's a, a, an onboarding process so that they can get used to having these things on. And it's a significant onboarding process. If we do this grant and everything and we got the cameras in tomorrow, which will never happen either, they're not going online tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I understand.
They, it's gonna be, uh.
They're gonna get used to it and they're gonna forget it's there and then.
But it protects the officers at the end of the day, right? The officer does a stop and there's a question later about what happened.
Okay, I work behind four hundred of them, there, Mr. Chair.
Yes. My apologies that the MOU was not in there. This was finalized when I was in the hospital. I will read the MOU into the record at this time. This memorandum of understanding, the MOU or memorandum is entered into on blank, the effective date, by and between New England Police Penitential Association Incorporated, Local O-nine-two, located at Seven Main Street, Hubbardson, Massachusetts, the first party, and the Town of Hubbardson Police Department located at Seven Main Street, Unit Nine, Unit Nine, Hubbardson, Massachusetts, the second party. First party and second party may be referred to individually as party or collectively as parties. With respect to the implementation of body-worn camera within the Town of Hubbardson Police Department, the rate paid listed in the step table referenced in section eighteen-point-three of the agreement between the parties, which was signed, sealed on, it was the day, January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, which went into effect from January first, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, will be replaced with the below the step table. The replacement of the step table will go into effect on the first day that the members are required to wear body-worn cameras, eighteen-point-three, which this will go in as replacement of their current table should this be approved. For the purpose of this contract, the wage and step below will be in effect beginning on July first, twenty-twenty-four. It is a quarter on every number in the sheet. All full-time police officers will work a four, four-day-on, two-day-off schedule in Institute seven-one-ninety-four for computing overtime. The weekly salary will be divided by forty hours, signed and sealed on blank day.
And?
Other?
Couple of questions. So, and this is July first, twenty-twenty-four, but we're not actually, but this isn't going into effect until Officer A has body camera on him.
Correct.
So if it's December first.
Is the contract.
Okay.
This will effectively on that day, when they begin wearing their cameras, replace what is in their current existing contract by memo of understanding.
Okay, question two, FY twenty-four rate, can we just strike that?
We can.
Cause that doesn't exist. The agency just took a while to negotiate, so that's why. Number three.
That's usually in the, when we do the contracts, it's always been in there. Doesn't need to be in there though.
Absolutely.
Um, and then.
The version I have opened is from Sergeant Blood. The finalized version, if authorized, will say Town of Hubbardson instead of Town of Hubbardson Police Department and FY twenty-four will be stripped.
Okay, and then my third thing, since it's illegal?
I have not yet.
And what's?
The plan.
What is the amount of the grant and the name of the grant?
Fifteen thousand dollars.
It's BWC grant, that's all I.
Body worn.
It wasn't a round number.
How many, um, how many, how many cameras for fifteen thousand dollars, guess?
You know?
And that includes the server too, right?
It is going to be a cloud-based.
I'm sure I was gonna say.
System. Uh, because it's through, it'll be through Axon, most likely. Uh, they're the most reputable, the easiest to work with. You know, a lot of the departments that have them, so that'd be what I'd be looking at, but, um, it'll be cloud-based. I wanna say it was eight cameras in the quote.
They can pay for the service annually?
There is an annual fee, yes.
Is it?
However.
In our budget or in your budget?
So the grant is, the grant covers everything year one.
Okay.
Um.
So you have to deal with renewal for twenty-six?
Correct. The cloud-based fee is the only thing that cannot be covered by future grants.
And it is.
Everything can be, thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. Nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighteen cents.
Thirty-five hundred dollars a year, uh, for the cloud-based fee.
Four grand raise, four, three grand. I mean, we're choking money here.
Mm-hmm.
But I agree with cameras you gotta have and it protects the officer.
What worries me is that, um, eventually the grants for these are gonna dry up and the state is going to say, you have to have a body-worn camera program within your department by this date. And then we have to eat the cost of everything.
Yes, yeah.
Um, this is the second or third year they've done this grant.
Yeah.
Um, should they do it again, I would, I'd be able to apply again to cover.
The file.
To cover fees, but it's just, they're gonna have to, they'll be updating, I'm sure, their grants and how they do it.
Kinda like we have.
But eventually that money.
We have to adjust your budget.
Cost of doing business, unfortunately.
Right. Well, I mean, it's, you gotta protect your staff.
Yep.
You gotta protect the people's rights on the street, so.
So now that you mentioned, you have, we already have the MOU, how, how do you want a motion to read? They just want.
I'm happy to give it a go.
Okay, go ahead, all right.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the, on behalf of the Town of Hubbardson, the Town Administrator be authorized to sign and accept the body-worn camera grant in the amount nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two cents, nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighteen cents. And also authorize, uh, the chairman or the board to sign the MOU um, with the police union negotiating the additional twenty-five cents per hour for body-worn cameras contingent upon review of legal and sign, uh, acceptance and approval by the union.
Second.
We have the MOU authorized by the board and signed by me.
I'd like to amend that to, um, allow the town administrator to sign on behalf of the board, provided those two contingencies are met.
I still second it.
Motion made, and second, any further discussion, questions?
Question.
Go.
Um, has the union agreed to this?
Tentatively.
They haven't voted through their.
But they seem amenable to it?
I don't see it being an issue.
Anything else? You might all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, thank you for that.
Yeah.
I just hope it's recorded somewhere.
Hopefully.
Did you get that, Patricia?
Yeah, she's got it. Super got it.
Okay, moving on.
Do we, while we're here, and as the chief mentioned, there's also the FY twenty-five municipal roads.
It's not on here, but if you were to.
Well, it's the attachments in my packet.
It is, I saw that. I can, I can speak to it and, uh.
So this is. That's not on the agenda.
By all means.
What, what is this?
That's if we.
No, I know what it is, cause I saw it.
We're doing it.
We're doing it.
We're doing it, go.
So we got a grant, we got a grant and I don't know, actually, the numbers are probably from the.
Yeah, they are. Nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. Put it rounded up.
So with your approval, I applied for this grant and was able to get it. It is for, um, OUI patrols, patrols for distracted driving, speeding, crosswalk violations, which we have a lot of, if you put the crux to it.
Oh, it would stop for me, so.
They don't.
But then again, I'm staring at them intensively, so, yeah.
Well, they have a, we have a, they have a decoy that walks across the street and then somebody stops them, so it works okay. Um, so we obtained this grant, we got this grant, um, so it is, it does, it's not intended to subsidize our patrol force, but it does help us have another officer working at a certain time and enforcing traffic laws. So it's a, it's a good grant to have, um.
And you got it, you've got the grant.
We, it was approved, yep. And we already.
You don't need anything from us in terms of that, right?
Did you accept?
Need to grant.
On behalf of that.
Accept it even though he's already got it.
Yep. Okay, it's been awarded to us pending your acceptance. Uh, we did get it last year and used quite a bit of it, so.
So can we do that now?
Yeah, yeah. Wasn't.
Yeah, it wasn't on here, but go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to accept the road safety grant that has been awarded to the police department.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, any questions and discussion, Peter?
Questions, of course I do. Um, does it, so, and this, this covers like speed traps and stuff like that, or? Like somebody sitting out there to, you can hire a guy for half a day to go out and sit and do radar?
It's a directed patrol. They have to stop so many vehicles and document those stops.
That's going active.
That we've been doing it.
Yeah. Oh, really?
On the last grant that we.
Oh, the last, last, oh, this passed.
Yes.
So this is for twenty five or four?
It's.
Technically twenty five.
I think it starts in November or something, somewhere around there.
Alright, thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the board, my apologies, in the fog that was the last eight days of my life, I attached the wrong email from the chief.
Yeah.
To the, to the packet. I apologize for that.
Yeah, almost in the midst.
We were able to wing it.
Okay, any other questions, a discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
I suppose.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Can I ask chief a question while we're sitting here?
Where we.
Seeing that you're sitting here, uh, Halloween is coming up.
Under fire here.
Yeah. Um, last year, I almost got ran over by a truck and was yelling obscenities at this truck. While everyone was trick or treating. Now, if I was a child, I would have been splatted. I know you and I have talked about this, but seeing that it's Halloween coming up, and I was not the only person out there in the middle of the road that almost got run over by a few vehicles, can we please have something that will slow people down when there's hundreds of little kids walking around in the darkness here?
I will have.
I don't care if you put a bonfire in each end of the street, just slow them down.
I will have extra officers and traffic personnel on duty that day, and they will be slowing people down on Main Street.
Thank you.
You are very welcome.
If I get hit by a car, I'm common.
Worse now if the road is completed than it ever was when it, before it was eaten.
That's my worry. Yeah.
Okay.
In the works.
Thank you.
Back to the agenda here.
Thanks.
Yeah. The Fire Department granted authorization request, thank you, Mr. Chair. Every year, the Fire Department applies for a firefighter safety equipment grant, which goes to buy firefighter safety equipment. It can purchase various types of equipment. It is a up to ten thousand five hundred dollar grant. They did receive it last year and they're looking to apply again this year.
Do we have, so I see the application, is it completed, or is this just the application of what they would submit, or am I missing something? It just seems like this is the, unless I'm firefighter safety equipment grant, and just looks like the application. I don't actually see what we're submitting.
Yeah, I thought.
Yeah, clarify.
How much is it? Twelve five? Twelve five?
Yeah, I have the document, but in the document is the application of what I would need to do if I wanna submit the application. I don't see it completed. Oh. Unless, I mean, I.
No, right here, my computer is saying, fire open vehicle, sorry.
Cause you weren't aware of the grant.
Apparently, I'm denied.
Nate, what was the amount you said?
Ten thousand five hundred.
That's not enough.
Up to.
So.
It goes by population, sir, so this says, and we have more than twenty five hundred people. And it's twenty five hundred to forty nine hundred, you get twelve five.
So, so with that being said, Nate, can you just summarize for us what the chief is looking for to apply for this year? Do we know what he's looking for? He just wants safety equipment?
Probably replace breathing apparatus, that's usually what they do.
So S C B I?
Yeah. Cause they, if they, yeah, they're expiring, they have a year, three years.
I think his board would be more than happy to support him submitting an application.
Yep.
Solid looking forward.
Yeah. Make sure it's enough money. So whatever he's gonna do.
Shortchanging if it's ten.
Filing for grants.
Yeah, I know. Please, fight for grants. All they are.
Alright.
Or after the money.
See if you.
We don't have it.
So, can we move forward on this? Are you looking up?
I'm looking up the email I have from chief.
And see if he states an amount, Nate, would you? Cause you might be looking at the wrong line.
Under eligibility?
Well, yeah.
That's what I'm, yeah, it's, I mean, we're, there's more than twenty five hundred people.
What's we, what's we actually need? I mean, all we're looking for is his approval. He's looking for our approval for him to apply to this grant, right? The answer is yes.
Yep.
Just because we don't have a filled out application in hand, doesn't mean we can't just say, yes, go ahead and apply for this.
Well, we can discuss it.
He's more to get back to.
No, there's not a filled out application in hand. What Bob said was also, cause it was the second email, looking for permission from the board to apply for this grant. We apply every year for this. Not sure what will be put in, put in, eh, put in, yeah, in, or as of today, but I will update you soon.
Mr. Chairman, would you accept the motion?
Yes.
I'd like to authorize the fire chief to submit a grants for the FY twenty five firefighter safety equipment grant program.
Second. Motion made and second. Any questions and further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, opposed. I think motion passed. Okay, moving on, whole business, we're tabling item A, cause, uh, more time is needed on the policies, so we will not be dealing anything with there, so let's move right to the town administrator's report.
We have been here quite some time this evening, so I will make this.
No.
The FY twenty six budget planning begins tomorrow. I'll be sending out an email to the departments and the board and committees on Wednesday. The senior deck is complete and there will be a
Coming, party.
A party, the COA pumpkin festival on October nineteenth. Katie brought up the Horables Parade, Katie brought up the Law Party.
Sorry.
There's going to, that's your computer thing.
Alright, so party on the deck.
There's a party on the deck.
Party on the deck.
Or the patio, which I think is the.
And what time is that party?
I will get you that information.
Okay, thank you.
COA Candidates Night at six thirty P M on October twenty third. I am moderating it. I am uncertain what candidates were going to be attending. Claudia invited all of the candidates.
I sent you an electronic sign up application for it. They put it on my desk.
When?
Saturday tonight. Earlier today.
Oh, today.
Yeah, we received one bid for the Library Foundation Project. It is, it is under review. It is nineteen thousand dollars, so it's much more compelling than the fifty thousand that the first one came in. Hopefully, at either your next meeting or the first meeting in November, I will bring that forward.
And refresh my memory, what's that for?
The library on this side of the building is.
Oh, yeah, the.
Structural issues, and when we had originally gone out, the scope was will you look at the foundation and masonry of the whole building, and it came in well over, well over budget. And so we, we phased it out, and this first phase is strictly looking at the problem, problematic right facing corner.
It's not the foundation.
It is the foundation.
So in the corner where the water spout used to come down.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
That's the bad part.
The water spout sinking.
I, it's, yeah. All the above. The, I'm still waiting on green light from National Grid for the library heat pump project. The, they tell us we're on their list. They, they're, they're National Grid. They do kind of what they want.
And that's a phase change on that?
Yes, that's a phase change to three phase electricity. Here, the municipal aggregation plan, you will be.
What happens, hold on, back up. How long do we have this grant for to get this three phase, and would we lose a grant, we can't get it together?
The library trustees, Kelly and myself have already authorized the company to put the stuff in, even though there's not the three phase at that time. They should be starting next week or the week.
Oh, however.
And then once, but they will be assuring that once the three phase goes on.
I have done my battle with National Grid and sometimes it takes forever.
We have until, I, I missed a Green Communities funding round over this already. So the next funding round will be in the spring.
Yeah. Nice.
There's a funding round in the spring and a funding round in the fall. Municipal aggregation, there will be meetings likely late October or early November. Please keep an eye out for that. For those who don't remember, that was the town meeting of twenty twenty three. The town and the board approved moving forward with exploring municipal aggregation, which is combining the town to get a cheaper municipal electricity rate. I'm hoping that we can save a couple of cents per kilowatt hour.
It's better than that.
While we're listening. No, it, the bang for your buck here is in the grand total, like it's going to be for the whole town.
For the whole town.
That doesn't help each individual.
It helps each individual a little, but.
Alright, two cents on three hundred kilowatts or whatever? What's that? Fifty cents? Better than nothing.
Well, I read a little thing that they're making it, so you can't do the third party anymore.
Yes, and the state's doing.
Yeah, so in other words.
Throwing them out.
This.
This will be the only way for us to.
All municipal aggregation.
Yeah.
Whatever it's called.
So in other words, instead of the third party, this would be your way to save.
And they are aiming to be competitively lower priced than those third parties. It's almost the same as the third party thing, just by aggregating or combining everyone's electrical rate together.
And they're just not cranking your price up after your first year contract.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's what I worry, cause when the state's like, oh, by the way.
Anytime they got their finger on it, it usually go vague, right? You go for this state.
I know, I don't understand that. I just wanted.
We'll be holding a meeting with the race management vendors with, uh, Princeton and
On camera.
And Rutland at the end of the month to talk about what is going to be within the request for proposal that is going to be released in November. That is from the grant that we received a few months back to work with Irene from the state. So we're moving forward on that.
Is that an open meeting?
Yeah, I'm gonna invite you all. Alright. I've made the invite, because it's our grant, I've had to do most of the lifting, so I made the invitation for it yesterday. We're meeting the three towns on Wednesday to approve the invitation and the pervage, and then I'll release it after that.
And the RFPs went out, right?
Nope, it's going out in November.
I thought they already went out.
So we have to.
I could have sworn you said they went out already.
Nope. The RFP will go out after this meeting, cause what this meeting is, is to talk to the vendors about the opportunity.
How many vendors are available?
We're gonna invite all of them. I think it's five or seven, not a ton.
I, I, I wasn't paying attention, Nate. What, what, what is this for?
Regional trash services.
So those.
That's the question I was thinking about to write down.
Yep.
Very good. Just save, just save this three minutes.
We are working on the, the new the new T P X phone system should be installed within a month. The server for forty eight Gardner Road has been ordered. And I did a cable survey that we haven't gotten the quote for on the area that I proposed proposing as the temporary town hall area. So I will let us, let you know when we receive that information. The structural deficit working group officially began its year two work in accordance with the select one goal. The digital equity plan workforce met, and it was interesting. So we are.
It was interesting.
Yep. I'm hoping the public portion of that will also be in November. If try to remember last month when we're aggressively busy again in, in November.
I want to.
Uh, Mary will be on vacation next week. I am going to MMA training on the seventeenth and STEM annual meeting, the small town administrators meeting on the twenty fourth.
Just a regular meeting, not annual.
Right, the fall. Uh, Patricia and firefighter E M T, firefighter paramedic Taylor Wilkinson are putting together a staff CPR certification. Do you have any more to tell them about that?
Um, we are going to have, um, eight of the, um, full-time and part-time staff come and get their certification for CPR and A E D training. Um, that includes COA, the town offices and the library staff. That way, when we do move, people in the building will have training enough to help in case, in time, you know, help actually arrives. Um, and so that is on the twenty fourth, we will be closing the town office for that training. Um, it's about, can be up to forty six hours. Not a lot goes into it. No. Yeah, it's, it's closer to four than it is to six. Um, so I'm really looking forward to that, and then everyone will get a certification card at the end of the training.
Good free of charge?
Yes.
I'm gonna cover it from, we're gonna cover it.
Oh, okay.
For it's twenty bucks.
It's twenty bucks, so.
And I would like to.
Is the class full yet?
Class is full, however, we're gonna do a second one.
Excellent, let me know when it is. Let me know.
I would like to thank Peter for bringing this up. He brought it up during the goal session. He brought up, he came early to the digital equity planning meeting during our.
I do some good.
During our staff meeting and was the driving force behind.
And pushing for A E T's, man.
Should be.
Should be grants up there.
That's true.
Buy that grant company, get on that, would you?
Okay, yeah. Moving right along, uh, thank you. Matt is not reasonably interested. We have two that I know of, and I'll do those first. Uh, first is a lease authorization for pine cone electric, Kevin Colstrom. What it is, it's a one-year lease with the option of renewal for one year on a mutual basis between the two parties.
What is it?
So let me tell this story.
Yeah, please tell the story.
Earlier today, I was at forty eight Gardner Road, because there's a plumbing. And then I smelt wonderful smells, so I went upstairs to explore.
Okay.
Over here?
Yeah.
Forty eight?
Yeah. And while I was upstairs, I met the electrician.
Oh, he came out of the closet?
Who had, no, he seems to, no, 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 yes, no.
It's in a closet, like.
And he had been in Maine for the last three months. He had no clue that the town.
Really? That's why we never saw.
Yeah, so I met him, very nice man. He's currently paying two hundred dollars a month to be there. He missed, he mailed it to Prem, and I'm sure we will get it back. But after that, I talked to him and he said, well, what can I do to stay? He said, well, two hundred dollars is not going to be enough. But I would reoppose to propose to the board that we allow you to stay on at will for a time. He said, well, I'd be willing to do a one-year lease and then mutually extend after if that was the will. He does plan on retiring shortly.
Is his office still?
Yeah. Well, not where we plan on utilizing. It's a closet.
It's.
I, so after, after having a nice conversation with this gentleman, he is a nice guy, plans on retiring. I asked him what he thought would be reasonable, and he had agreed that two hundred and seventy five to three hundred dollars would be reasonable. I tended to agree because he doesn't use too much of the utilities.
Three hundred sounds good.
Three hundred sounded good. That, so that's where we're at. There is not a written version of this. But I didn't wanna hold off on it because he's going back to Maine.
Alright.
So he, the contract would be retroactive, the lease would be retroactive to October first of this year. October first of next year, having similar language to all of the other lease contracts.
Okay, so, hold on, we, we circled around, there, there was a smell. What?
Oh, no.
No, we're circling back to this.
Uh, let's not bring this up now, okay? We've been here a long time, and that's not on the agenda, and I'd rather not.
When it rains.
Start now.
Get an unplug and smell.
Oh, yeah.
So I check up there.
Yeah, okay.
So let's not.
Mr. Chairman, would you accept the motion?
Does it need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to enter into a one-year lease from October first of twenty twenty four to October first of twenty twenty five for forty eight Gardner Road for the tenant pine cone electric, Kevin P Holstrom, with the monthly lease payment due by the first of the month of three hundred dollars.
Second, motion made and second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, another
item on the, uh. Resident dealers on Laurel, been in the building since nineteen ninety four.
Oh, really? Oh, my God.
We have an appointment? We have an appointment to take care of, finally, our last thing, hopefully, of, assessors clerk Leanne Moses, assessors clerk of twelve hours. Testing department, wage twenty dollars and seventy-six cents, uh, expiring six-thirty twenty-twenty, oh, correct? On that day.
Twenty-five, my apologies.
It says twenty-twenty-four.
My apologies.
So.
It's already expired.
Unless there's any discussion on this, we could have a motion to accept the.
This is the same grade and step as the fire person was E-one?
It's up a little bit, because the other one was kind of low-balled and it didn't work out well.
So, I'm sorry, I'm confused, so isn't class, a group E, step one, gonna be the same A regardless?
Yes.
So this person's not getting paid the same?
This person is being paid almost a dollar more than the previous one, cause I'm a rootless middle kid.
To the person previously, were they not an E-one, were they a D something?
They were lower.
Okay, so you re-scored the position?
It was properly scored, it was scored as an E already. But it was not scored prior as, it was updated last year, when we did the uh, wage to class schedule for FY twenty-five. All of the clerical positions were moved within the week.
Okay.
More money.
But the last person was a D, so they left before the root class?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the assessment of the assessors' work of Leanne Moses, twelve hours a week, wage E-one, expiring six-thirty twenty-twenty-five.
Motion made, second and second, any discussion, all in favor?
I guess.
Opposed, motion carried, are there any other matters not written and anticipated by the chair?
Next meeting.
Okay, our next meeting is. It's the state for that.
Weeks from today, twenty-first?
Two weeks.
Yes, October twenty-first is your next meeting.
Twenty-first, okay. Uh, any questions from the public? Still here, yes, oh, you waited a long time, I hope.
I hope this is worth it, for this amount of time to wait, jeez.
I thought of it, uh, after you guys talked about it, so I'm the owner of one nineteen little Westminster Road property with telephone pole.
Oh.
Travis, Travis Dean's old, too close to the road, there is a stone wall against the road, do we have to go through any type of permitting process? To move this wall or how we?
Yes.
Yes, Travis has the, you go through Travis.
Okay.
No, you go through the planning board.
Oh, yeah, but doesn't, isn't that driveway?
No, um, it's a scenic road, um, so they have to abide by the scenic road application for the stone wall removal. So that'll be a public hearing before the pub, the planning board to um, and they'll listen to your petition to remove this stone wall and why it needs to be moved and that kind of thing, so that has to go through the.
Hopefully it's good.
Does that help, I mean, you can.
Yeah, no, I just, I, I didn't wanna bother you guys during.
He couldn't do it, he could've done it during open session, right?
Were you here from the very beginning, I'm sorry?
Yeah, open session is when you, you know, you can present yourself.
Don't tell him now, he'll really be.
No, but, no, you know what I mean, just so you know, yeah, so you don't have to sit your whole thing, open session is when you're, you're open to the public to speak.
Yeah, I thought of that halfway through after.
That's all right, well, now you learn a little bit.
I hope, I hope at least the information helps.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Alright, any, anything else on the public, press, seeing none?
Motion George John.
At, on the motion, we're adjourned at nine oh six.
Second, second? Second.
All in favor?
Yes.